Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Ashkosh Area School District Board of Education for Wednesday, April 30th, 2014. Has this meeting been properly noticed? Please call the roll.
Here.
Eliason.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Berthoff.
Here.
Wenderberg.
Here.
Seiden.
Here.
We have a call.
All right. First, we have the Pledge of Allegiance and tonight we are joined by several students from Perry Tipler Middle School. We are joined by Hannah Powell and by Ellery Wolf Dahl. If you would please rise and join them on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ellery, thank you very much for joining us. Hannah, thank you very much for joining us. And as I said before, you are free to go at this point, and you certainly also like to stay in position.
She's going to be walking. You don't even wait for your parents. You just go.
Zoom, right out the door.
Okay, next. Recognition of Employee of the Year Awards.
Yes, President Wiedenhoff, this evening we're really pleased to recognize, and we have a number present, of our Employees of the Year that have been previously recognized, but it's a pleasure to introduce them and give a little background to them this evening at our public board meeting. It's a pleasure to present to you our Employees of the Year Award winners for 2013-14 school year. We received over 275 nominations for these awards. The nominations were then independently rated by 12 individuals, members of our staff, who represented each of our employee groups. Scores were then added together to determine the eight individual winners. Each winner received a wood plaque created internally by our own Ashkosh West Technology teacher, John Omen, who created the awards. And the Celebration Education Awards in late March. The two winners were selected in each of the following categories: Elementary Teacher of the Year, Secondary Teacher of the Year, and finally Support Staff of the Year. And one winner was selected for Administrator of the Year and a First-Year Teacher of the Year Award. And I would appreciate if the winners would step forward to the table. I understand that we do have one individual who was not able to join us this evening and one who may not be able to, but the rest of our winners are present and I see them in about the second row, so if they would be able to step forward and be at the front table, we really appreciate being able to honor and recognize each of them individually. Looks as though Kelsey Gunther was not able to be able to join us, but I'll share with the audience information about Kelsey. Kelsey is a second-grade teacher at Webster-Stanley Elementary and was selected as Elementary Teacher of the Year. Ms. Gunther's classroom is a place where every second grader finds success. I have worked with educators who exemplify positively like Mrs. Gunther. She also demonstrates great skills as a teacher. Mrs. Gunther is involved with nearly every activity that takes place at Webster-Stanley Elementary, and due to a previous commitment, Kelsey was not able to join us this evening. Nicole Ponzer, fourth-grade teacher. Just indicate by raising your hand. Nicole, at Reed Elementary, was selected as Elementary Teacher of the Year. She has gone above and beyond in every way to possibly support her colleagues and students. Nicole is willing to step to all the key leadership roles, and she has led literacy and math committees, sale, pennies for patients, and is a member of the Fox Valley Writing Project. And I had given the note that we weren't sure you were going to be here, but we were glad you were able to join us this evening. I think the slides will move. Yes. Andrew Britton, and I don't see Andrew here. Social Studies teacher at Ashkosh West High School, was selected as Secondary Teacher of the Year. Andrew is a teacher who regularly helps average students transform into above-average students, a teacher that puts in more hours helping students than any other teacher I know. And these are comments from the nominating individual and whose students regularly outperform on the national average on the Advanced Placement Test in history. So, congratulations to Andrew. Brooke Hentsch, and Brooke is here. School counselor at Ashkosh West High School, was selected as Secondary Teacher of the Year. Brooke leads her students towards success by inspiring and creating hard-working students who want to achieve and reach greater heights. She is also a motivator of all students. Brooke spends countless hours working through the planning conferences with her students and best interest as her impetus. She truly takes ownership and invests in her students' abilities to succeed. So, congratulations, Brooke. Thank you for being here. Val Aronson. Val is here this evening. Val, counselor, these two individuals kind of work closely together at Ashkosh West High School. Secretary at Ashkosh West High School and was selected Support Staff Employee of the Year. Val constantly goes above and beyond for all students, parents, staff, and the district. She's our go-to person for just about everything. Val's organizational skills are exceptional. She handles very large projects for West High School. Val goes out of her way to make all students feel valued and special. Thank you, Val. Christine Steinhebler. Christine, paraprofessional at Ashkosh West High School, was selected Support Staff Employee of the Year. Chris's professional goal for the school year was to make the culture of West more positive. Her encouraging words, positive energy, constant enthusiasm, and most importantly, her advocacy for all students shows she is not only meeting but far exceeding that goal. And I know that if you run into Christine in West High School hallways, you will learn something new and exciting that minute, that day, because you will instantly learn what's happening at West High School. So, congratulations, Christine. We are joined this evening by Craig Leader, Activities Coordinator at Ashkosh West High School. He was selected Administrator at North High School. That's a do-one back from last year at graduation, right? Was selected as Administrator of the Year. Craig does everything he can to help everyone around him and be the best he can be. He's truly the most humble and dedicated leader you will ever find and come across and absolute honor and privilege to work with Craig Leader. So, thank you. And last, Tiffany Perez. And Tiffany is not able to join us this evening. Kindergarten teacher at Oklon Elementary, was selected First-Year Teacher of the Year. Ms. Perez has created a magic classroom. She makes a big deal out of all the milestones and little accomplishments of little kids. Ms. Perez created excitement for learning. So, thank you to Christine. And we're so grateful that five of you were able to join us this evening and to be honored. And we had a great time going around the district, identifying, showing up, much like a famous magazine contest, showing up with a gift and honoring each, and particularly if we were able to honor in front of your colleagues and students, it was a great opportunity. So, congratulations to all of you.
Yes, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank all of you for your commitment to this district.
Thank you.
Board Administrative Reports. Superintendent's Report?
Yes, this evening Superintendent's Good News Report for April 30th, 2014. First of all, we'd like to honor and recognize the National Hispanic Honor Society Scholarship Award winner, Bree Nagel. Student with CAP Spanish class at Ashkosh North High School, was awarded Scholarship for the National Hispanic Honor Society Competition. It is tough, and Bree's application and interview were excellent. She represents Ashkosh schools in a very positive way. Congratulations to Bree. Green Medal Elementary School recently had DARE graduation, and we honor those students. Congratulations to Green Medal fifth-grade students for successfully completing the DARE program at school this past month. Arts in Garden Show. Congratulations to Emily Reichenberger from Ashkosh West for her Best of Show Award, Oil Painting of Elephant, at this year's Arts in the Garden Show, and to Emma Thompson for winning first place in her Mosaic Bird. As you can see, both award winners cited at the recent event that took place at the hotel. Diversity Night at Oklon. Oklon Elementary School brought families and cultures together for the annual Diversity Night on Friday, April 4th. Participants were able to experience the thrill of traveling without the hassle of lost luggage and flight delays. This year's event featured presentations on Greece, Egypt, Russia, Sudan, South Korea, India, Laos, Croatia. Special performances included UWO Tokyo Taekwondo drumming among dancers accompanied by the Ashkosh West High School and Ashkosh North High School students, Oneida Native American dancers, and storytelling by Kay Emerson Wieden. Special thanks to Diversity Night Planning Committee, parents and staff, and volunteers, and many sponsors of the event, including Cobus and Bus Company and Vitali Restaurant. And I've heard many wonderful things about that evening at Oklon. South Park Band. Students participate in eighth-grade band festival. On April 4th, 2014, the South Park Middle School eighth-grade band members participated in the seventh annual Kalahari Eighth Grade Band Festival in Wisconsin Dells. The band spent time listening to other bands performing with adjudicators and working with the clinician. Members celebrated a great performance by spending time in the water park and amusement park. Forty-three bands from Wisconsin, Iowa, Minnesota, Michigan performed at the festival. The South Park Middle School eighth-grade band is directed by Mrs. Emily Bauer. This is South Park's fourth appearance at this event with Mrs. Bauer. Ashkosh North High School. Students support warming shelter. Twenty Ashkosh North High School students participated in the warmth of the Community Canvas Project to support the Ashkosh Day-by-Day Warming Shelter. Community members have had the opportunity to view all canvases donated by artists for the project on Saturday, June 7th. Kits and feel during the gallery walk. The canvases will be delivered to donors at random and will help with the warming shelter and raise $25 per canvas. And a large number of students participated in that activity. Smith Elementary receives $2,500 from the Monsanto Fund. Smith Elementary was recipient of $2,500 donation from the Monsanto Fund on behalf of local farmer and father to Smith's second-grade teacher, Stacy Reese. The Bricker family selected Smith School to receive the donation through the American Farmers Grow Communities. Congratulations to Smith School and the staff for their hard work and contributions throughout the community. 4K Family Night at the YMCA. On April 8th, Ready for 4K Program celebrated Week of the Young Child by holding a second annual 4K Family Night at the YMCA. Week of the Young Child is an annual celebration sponsored by the National Association of Education of Young Children, the NAYEC, the world's largest early childhood education association. The 4K Family Night is a unique district event where families from all 19 4K sites come together to enjoy a family event full of activities organized, collaborated by the 29 4K teachers and hosted by the largest of the 4K collaborative partner sites, the 20th Avenue YMCA. More than 650 people attended the event and participated in organized free play hosted in the large gymnasium, the family primetime, the soccer arena, the multipurpose room, and the swimming pool. 4K children also had a chance to enter and win raffle prizes aimed at keeping families active throughout the spring and summer months. So, large activity for upcoming kindergarteners. Tipler Middle School Career Exploration. Ashkosh Middle School counselors partnered with Ashkosh Chamber and area businesses for career exploration. The second week of April meant eighth graders from five middle schools traveled out of their classrooms into the real world as they conducted job site shadowing, and they had many opportunities to visit and discover what their parents do every day. Laughter. 4K joke theater. Laughter is a medicine. It is contagious. It binds people together, increases happiness, strengthens your immune system, and diminishes pain. Best of all, it's free. On April 17th, Peace Christian Preschool hosted a 4K joke theater. 4K students memorized teachers' selected jokes and presented their jokes, what? One by one, to the family audience and almost 100% family participation. The project promoted public speaking, confidence building, community building, peer support, and memory building. I'm sure that was quite an event. Ashkosh West Nursery and Landscape Team members qualified for Nationals. Congratulations to Ashkosh West Nursery and Landscape Team. They took first place in the state career development contest in Madison on April 25th. Mackenzie Somerville earned the first place. Caitlin Walker earned second place. Sam Hanson earned fifth place, and the students qualified to attend the Nationals in Louisville, Kentucky. The FFA advisor is Tina Runbaum. We're walking. Yes, indeed, we're walking. The Ashkosh School District will be offering a community walking program next fall, beginning in November and lasting through April, at Ashkosh West and Ashkosh North High Schools. Individuals may walk in designated paths in the high schools, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, when school is in session from 5:00 to 7:30 a.m. and 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There will be no charge for the program. Participants must register in advance with the Recreation Department and receive additional identification badge. Additional activities on the program will be available with the Recreation Department School Year Activity Guide and will be distributed in August. This project is a result of my interaction this winter with a number of senior citizens, especially at basketball events, who talked to me about the opportunity to want to walk when we have so much snow and ice outside, it's unsafe. I approached Al Wenig, and he and Randy Johnston and Dave Hole worked together with our building principals and identified a process, and rather quickly, within about six-week period, we were able to implement a walking program for not just seniors but for all who might want indoor walking in the misery of winter. Ashkosh West teacher places 34th in the Boston Math Marathon. Congratulations to Ashkosh West teacher, Jason Reif, on excellent performance at the 118th Boston Marathon. Jason finished again in 34th place with a time of 2 hours and 23 minutes and 6 seconds.
Wow. He's amazing.
That's incredible. It's a second consecutive year he topped the field of entrance from Wisconsin. Congratulations, Jason. Ashkosh North Art. Students participated in UW Ashkosh High School Art Day. Seven art students took time away from the spring break to attend the University of Wisconsin Ashkosh High School Art Day event on Friday, April 25th. Students were able to bring their own artwork to receive verbal and written feedback from UWO faculty, art faculty, to participate in a 90-minute workshop and interact with art students from the surrounding area. Those representing Ashkosh North High School Art Department at the event include Brittany Ratchman, Emily Roth, Sidney Gauthier, Zao Plai Tao, Mimi Hicks, Emily Schussler, Healy Bang, and Rachel Mathie. Congratulations to all the students who participated, and congratulations to Sidney Gauthier and Emily Schussler for having their artwork selected to be on display during the HSAD exhibition at the Steinhebler Gallery located in UW's Reed Memorial Union. The HSAD exhibition will run April 28th through May 3rd. Fall Music Artist Concert Series supports Ashkosh High School Jazz Programs. On Saturday, April 19th, Christine Marisak of Hyde Music and Justin Mitchell of the Ashkosh Scene presented Ashkosh North High School Band Director Jim Dorshner with a donation of $1,385 to support the North and West Jazz Programs. The funds were raised at the Fall 2013 Ashkosh Music Artist Series Concert, which featured Kurt Stein's School of Music, the Jazz Orgy, the UW Ashkosh Jazz Ensemble, and KW T4 with Tom Rocha, joining Hyde and the Orchestra Ashkosh Scene at the event sponsors that were held at the Algoma Club and back at Cranky Paths and the Ashkosh Convention and Visitors Bureau. $200 was also presented to the UW Ashkosh Jazz Ensemble. According to Dorshner, the funds will be used to purchase new music for the full ensemble at North High School while expanding the educational opportunities for students at both schools. Pottery for Patients. Each year, the Ashkosh North High School ceramics, two and three students are responsible for generating a community benefit through their ceramic art. A group of art students wants to support families who have a child who is undergoing medical treatment at the Milwaukee Children's Hospital. The funds raised will provide free accommodations for the patient's family. Ashkosh North High School art students will be creating and donating over 80 wheel-thrown bowls and mugs. The handmade pottery will be sold at Ashkosh North High School on Art Night on Thursday, May 8th from 5:00 to 7:00. And the Ashkosh Farmers Market on Saturday, June 7th from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. in the space near Peabody's Ale House. Each piece will be sold for $8 donation, and the goal is to reach $700 for the Milwaukee Ronald McDonald House. Swimming for the Gold. Carl Trago, eighth-grade student, Aaron Connors, will be the youngest member of Team Wisconsin's 62 athletes to make the trip to 2014 Special Olympic USA Games in New Jersey on June 14th through the 21st. Aaron will be swimming, has been swimming since she was three years old, with the help of her coach, Aaron, and part of the Team Blue as Special Olympics swimmers. For the past five years during this time, she's earned two gold, three silver, three bronze medals in state competition. This year, Aaron qualified for the state Special Olympics Games and needed to earn a gold or silver medal while there in order to qualify for her coach to nominate her for training camp, which was held at UW in September. Aaron attended that camp with 22 swimmers who were invited and were evaluated by their coaches on whether they should be selected for the Olympic team and would be a good fit for a positive experience. The names of the four males and females were picked from a hat, and Aaron was one of the eight individuals chosen. Congratulations to Aaron. We wish her well in the 2014 Special Olympics USA Games in June. With that, lastly, the activities of the past three weeks or so of the superintendent are also listed. With that completes the report Superintendent's Good News Report for this week.
All right. Thank you. Would you like to go on to the Listening Session Report?
Sure. Some three weeks ago now, because of the extra space in our meetings, we had two guests at the April 9th Listening Session. First guest expressed concerns about all the assessments being done and how the data's being collected and follow-up action. We will be asking Julie Mosher to be in contact with the individual and answer specific questions on especially writing assessment methodology. That meeting has been scheduled. Secondly, our second guest discussed redistricting and the potential to meet with AMRO and Rippon School Districts, particularly related to some of the peninsulas of land that exist in the southwest portion of the school district. He also congratulated the district on passing the referendum, and he asked for information on how the $1.4 million for tech was determined. And Dave has followed up with information regarding that issue.
All right. Thank you very much. Other reports. Kelly.
Education Committee met on Thursday, April 17th. We had an update on course options, which right now is kind of in a holding pattern. Apparently, at the state level, it was sort of decided that the school district would pay for all of the CAP courses or pay the entire fee, which is not what we budgeted for. And so, right now, that's kind of in a holding pattern. There's a meeting at the state level on April 29th to decide that, and currently, UW CAP has agreed to work with us in terms of helping move those students through and help endorse some of that cost until things get straightened out at the state level. We also had an update on career pathways at the high school and kind of integrating WIS careers and career pathways more intentionally in terms of what we're doing for our students in terms of college and career readiness. And what that's going to look like is basically three strands where there'll be career exploration, financial literacy and career and life skills. And Julie Mosher briefed us on what all that looks like in terms of moving the students through and helping them prepare for life beyond school. We also talked about STEM through sailing, and Steve wasn't able to be at our meeting. And so, if you want to add anything to this, please do. In terms of this opportunity that's going to be at Webster Middle School next year in either the first or second semester where students can study STEM through sailing and marine sciences, right?
That's it.
Yeah. It's pretty exciting. Project Lead the Way modules are being incorporated, and there's teachers that are interested in doing that, and Steve Eliason and Dr. House are working to move that forward. So, that's real exciting for the middle schools. Ashkosh West is launching the Academy for Global Studies starting next year, and there seems to be strong support to really get the STEM program at Shapiro ignited and off and running. So, that has been a new topic to explore further, trying to determine how we can push that forward and move that forward for those folks out there. And future agenda items are to look at some of the reading scores based on what happened with the WKCE. And so, our next meeting is, I don't know when.
Okay.
It's not here, so it's next month.
All right.
Sometime in May.
Sometime in May.
Other reports? Steve, do you want to give?
Policy and Governance met. There was pretty much no new innovation, but a lot of cleanup based off of that Losby review. Those are up this evening for our consideration. They were all pushed through Policy and Governance for this evening. Both Policy 443, which has to do with alcohol and drug use, Policy 341.5, student wellness, and Policy 460, student awards and scholarships are all up.
Did you also want to give the report on? Oh, are we going to do that at the other meeting?
Uh huh.
Okay, never mind then. Allison.
Facilities and Finance met on April 17th. We reviewed the Budget Variance Report. There was one item that needs to be corrected if anybody noticed. Sue had said that she was concerned about the utilities budget. She is not concerned about the utilities budget, so if there's anybody out there that was questioning that. The update on Oklon spending is we had that $96,000 bill from the city that we weren't really sure what that was about. It turns out that it's kind of a long story, but essentially, we assumed that we would have about 2,000 cubic yards that we were going to be disposing of soil, contaminated soil. By the time we were finished, it was about 8,000. So, the difference in cost is 96 grand. We do owe it, which brings our final balance at Oklon down to 125 grand. We were briefed by Brad Jedarski and Tim Dolish on the upcoming projects at West High, new fencing, getting all of the old fencing fixed up, as well as the locker replacement and refurbishing. They've done about 60 to 70% of the lockers, and they want to finish that, but it's costly and it's time-consuming, and what they're looking at is sharing those costs between the West site budget and the maintenance budget. Okay. Peggy West showed up.
that was questioning that. The update on Oklon spending is we had that ninety-six thousand dollar bill from the city that we weren't really sure what that was about. It turns out that it's kind of a long story, but essentially, we assumed that we would have about two thousand cubic yards that we were going to be disposing of soil, contaminated soil. By the time we were finished, it was about eight thousand. So, the difference in cost is ninety-six grand. We do owe it, which brings our final balance at Oklon down to a hundred and twenty-five grand. We were briefed by Brad Jadarski and Tim Dolish on the upcoming projects at West High, new fencing, getting all of the old fencing fixed up, and, as well as the locker replacement and refurbishing. They've done about sixty to seventy percent of the lockers, and they want to finish that. But it's costly and it's time-consuming, and what they're looking at is sharing those costs between the West site budget and the maintenance budget. Okay. Peggy West showed up, and she told us about three increases that we're going to be voting on tonight. The lunch price increase will be five cents, breakfast will be ten cents, and milk will be five cents. So, we're voting on that this evening. Randy told us about the current projects where he's working on, the rec department, the Merrill, tuck pointing, abatement of all asbestos in all tunnels, and boiler demoing. The last subject that we talked about was regarding the cross-country ski gear. Given the success that we'd had at E. Cook, was there a way to maybe use some of the funds from Oklon to start a program there? There was a meeting with the Oklon principal and then some community advocates, and at this point, the Finance and Facilities Committee is worried that, and Sue Schnorr brought up a very good point, that when people voted on the referendum for Oklon, they didn't vote to buy skis. However, we talked about another way that we could get skis at that school, and Stan's going to look into getting us a way where the community can donate, and if we could get some old skis and old poles, maybe we can find a way to buy boots and bindings that we could refit some of that equipment with. We also talked about the fact that the rec department just donated some money and some funds and have bought new boots. So, we hope that issue isn't dead, that we'll keep kind of stumbling forward. We talked about if the community, we were to have a big donating, donation drive, where would we have it? Where would people drop off stuff? And we talked a lot about St. Vincent's, so we'll see if we can make that happen. The next meeting, I believe, Sue, is it June twelfth? Is that?
It's June twelfth.
It's June twelfth. Okay. So, we're going to skip the May meeting because of everybody's schedules. A lot of people won't be able to make it, so we're just going to take the June meeting, move it up a week, which is June twelfth at eight AM.
All right. Thank you. Other reports? Seeing none, we will go on to the non-agenda-related public forum. Does anyone wish to speak tonight on a topic which is not on tonight's agenda? Please state your name and record, uh, name and address for the record and limit your comments to five minutes.
Teresa Thiel, two four six West Twelfth Avenue. This will be very brief, but I'm really having a hard time hearing some of you, so if you could move your microphones closer, because it's frustrating. Not all of you, but some of you.
Thank you. Thank you, Teresa.
Okay. All right. Any other non-agenda-related items? Seeing none, we will move on to agenda-related public forum. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight on an item which is on tonight's agenda? No?
You guys all have orange shirts on. Somebody should tell us why.
Please state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to five minutes.
Kristen Lasky, thirty-one ninety Old Orchard Lane. Can you hear me back there? You all recognize me from all the work that I did on Oklon, and it actually feels really good to be here for the South Side, for the expansion of Lakeside. You know, my husband and I make a joke that for years, we would joke that it was the two questions of the year, or at the end of the summer was, is Brett Favre going to come back and is Lakeside Elementary School going to close? Brett Favre's obviously not coming back. We've got Aaron Rodgers, which is nice, some security. So, I am now hoping that we can stop the talk about is Lakeside Elementary going to close. As you all know, the South Side has had, you know, a lot of their issues in the past, and through my Oklon work, you know, we really pushed education is equality, and I think it's the South Side's turn, and I think that we've been patient enough, and I think that the quicker we do this, the better we'll be. So, if you could give that, your support, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak tonight on an agenda-related item? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to Consent Resolution Agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item, or as discussed at a previous meeting, these will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. And so far, I have five B, eight, and fifteen. Is that correct? Anyone else wish to pull anything from tonight's agenda? No? All right. The Board will consider approval of. Minutes of regular board meeting on March twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen. Minutes of regular board meeting, executive session on March twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen. Minutes of regular board meeting on April ninth, two thousand fourteen. Bills payable personnel, A, appointments, resignations, retirements, and salary schedule. Number six, regularly scheduled board meeting dates and times from July first, two thousand fourteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. School breakfast and lunch price increase. Number nine, extended year staffing for current school year. Number ten, updates to Policy four, forty-three point four, alcohol and other drug use. Number eleven, updates to Policy three, four, one point five, student wellness. Number twelve, updates to Policy four, sixty, student awards and scholarships. Number thirteen, updates to Policy three, four, six, student records. Number fourteen, summer school staffing program plan. Number sixteen, layoff list for two thousand fourteen, fifteen. And number seventeen, adoption of curriculum materials.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Burzak?
Aye.
Burzak, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Saginac?
Aye.
Saginac, aye. Widenhoff?
Aye.
Widenhoff, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Motion carried.
All right. Resolution five B, be resolved, the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved the appointment and salary schedule as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education for Michael Rule, one point oh, Principal Emmeline Cook Elementary School, effective July first, two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Barbara?
My question on this one had to do with the length of the contract. We have a starting date, but we don't have an indication as to whether or not this was a one-year or a two-year appointment, and so, that was why I asked that this be pulled and voted on separately, so that that point could be clarified.
It's a one-year contract.
Thank you.
July one of fourteen to June thirtieth of fifty.
Thank you.
And as a, as a matter of practice with all first-year administrators, we would always deal with that, so.
That's good to know. I think it's also good to include it in the resolution. Thank you.
Anything else with regard to this? All right. Seeing none, call the roll.
Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Mursack?
Aye.
Burzak, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Saginac?
Aye.
Saginac, aye. Widenhoff?
Aye.
Widenhoff, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Motion carried.
Barb?
This, I believe this particular resolution was actually laid over from a prior meeting, and that allowed the Board to get information that it didn't have at the time it was on the agenda prior to this, and that information was largely the result of survey work that was done to determine what the population of that particular attendance area felt was in the best interest not only of that particular area of the school district, but the entire district. To me, this resolution makes a good deal of sense for several reasons. There have been other discussions around this table relative to use of facilities, and we've heard some, some suggestions that would give the, the Board and the district greater flexibility in the use of other facilities by uniting the, the Green Meadow students with their siblings at Lakeside. And having been a substitute principal for a few days at least, out at the, the Lakeside location, to me, it makes good sense to do this. Another reason that I will support this is that, my understanding is that based on information shared with the Board of Education, the Lakeside Elementary School attendance area is one from which the district has seen a good deal of exodus, where students have either enrolled in other schools within the district, or have been entered into homeschooling, or have left the district. So, my hope is that passage of this resolution would allow us to retain and bring back students into that attendance area for the good of the entire district, and would also provide more flexibility in the use of other facilities, as the Board has discussed, for example, greater flexibility in unifying the four K program is, is one possible piece. But I think that, that whole explanation speaks to the notion of needing a, a long-range plan on all facilities, including boundary lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments regarding this? I guess my own comment was, I actually initially was thinking about asking for a slight change in wording, since it says proceeding with design and construction planning. I just would like to emphasize, I'm not going to ask for a change so much as for people to realize that the word planning does follow the other two. It's, it's not proceeding with design and construction, and this will, or certainly in my mind, this will come or should come before the Board again, once, once it's going to construction, once construction bids are in, so that we would be voting on it again. So, I won't ask for a change in wording so much as I will point out the fact that the word planning follows those two, as though they were in parentheses, proceeding with an addition planning for this. Any other items with regard to this? No? All right. Please call the roll.
Burzak?
Aye.
Burzak, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Saginac?
Aye.
Saginac, aye. Widenhoff?
Aye.
Widenhoff, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Resolution number fifteen, be resolved, that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved the appointment and salary schedule as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. Junko Jacobs, leader, summer school principal, effective for the two thousand fourteen summer school session. Peter Sernhaus, secondary summer school principal, effective for the two thousand fourteen summer school session.
So moved.
Second.
Barb?
I think I asked for the wrong, the wrong one, so I will be voting yes on this.
All right.
I meant to ask for some discussion on number fourteen, but I got my numbers mixed up. I apologize.
Please call the roll.
Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Saginac?
Aye.
Saginac, aye. Widenhoff?
Aye.
Widenhoff, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Burzak?
Aye.
Burzak, aye. Motion carried.
All right. That brings us to requests for future agenda items. Anyone here that has anything they would like to see on the future agenda? Barb?
I don't know where this fits, but, but I would like us to talk at some point, or have a discussion at some point about the, the way we do business at the meetings. I know that at our reorganization meeting on Monday, we adopted all policies and so on and so forth, and I know that Policy one seventy speaks to providing the Board with staff reports for anything that's on workshop, and we've sometimes received those in advance, sometimes we've not. As a new board member, I assumed operator error on my part with the iPad, and I just thought, I wasn't able to locate some of those, and in calling, Sherry, the, the administrative assistant, found that they weren't prepared. And I, I think we should be following Policy one seventy. I think we also should be addressing the, in the strategic plan, I believe it's goal, the second goal, which has to do with providing the Board with adequate information on which to make decisions, data-driven decisions. And so, I would like to see those staff reports submitted, for example, when the packets come out on Friday. I understand that there are situations where things need to be amended, or they need to come later, but there have been times I know that we've, we've received information the day before the meeting, or the day of the meeting, and I think that's problematic in, in terms of the Board being able to really review the materials adequately and, and be in a position to make informed decisions. So, I'd like to see us address, address that.
And actually, I would say that those, those reports are very helpful. The Board relies, at least I rely on them heavily.
I do, too.
So, yes, we, we certainly appreciate it when they're taken seriously and, and fully address the issues of, of the resolution.
Thank you.
So, would you be looking for a workshop on something like that?
I'm not sure what's appropriate.
Well, you, I mean, we.
If we, if, it needs to be a workshop in order to have some discussion on it, or...
Perhaps not, although certainly.
Or maybe what I've shared is adequate.
Yes. We've, we did previously, as a Board, have a discussion on the issue of the change in format of board meetings, in the fact that there are no resolutions on the first meeting of the month, that we're, we're sharing information and we're not asking board members to take any action ever on the first meeting of the month, and we are attempting to develop a process, and as you know, in the last three months, we've been fully engaged in other activities, but it would be the goal to bring to the Board a modification as to what the reports should look like for the first meeting of the month, since the board members are not being asked to take action on anything on that evening, but it's an information-sharing event, as opposed to the second meeting of the month, which absolutely full materials relating to what would be proposed for action, but with a timeframe of trying to supply, and we will certainly do that, supply as much detail as possible for the first meeting of the month, but we're also, having restructured now, we're going on into our second year of having two very different meetings of the month, one for lots of information sharing and one for action, as this one was this evening, that we would want to have a different format for that presentation, and we need to do that. And we'll prepare that and see if that meets the Board's criteria for adequacy of reporting that would be included, because presently, the format that is there doesn't make a lot of sense, because we're not asking for, and it defines formally what the resolution should be for that action, and it's simply an information-sharing report first. So, we will follow through with that.
Thank you.
Anything else with regard to future agenda items?
Members of the Board, I would just, we are working very hard on being well-prepared. This coming month of May is, is the first anniversary of where we're at with strategic plan. Our executive team has been working extensively with being able to fill in lots of pieces of the next steps, particularly with the passage of the referendum of what are the next steps, and we would see that a rather expanded major topic will be a line-by-line review of progress on the strategic plan as being an essential element. The community expects that of us, you as a Board, I'm sure expect that of us, and our goal is to share in great detail the strategic plan update. To give you a sense of that, many of the revisions that are already there are easily retrievable right now, because they, they have been updated. There may be some supplementary materials, but we will make sure that before our meeting, which I believe is the fourteenth, if I'm not mistaken, of May, we will have the Friday before that, all that material to, to you. It's, and it's important anniversary for us, because as we look at what has been accomplished, again, bearing in mind that we said at the beginning, a strategic plan is, is a up to three-year document. We want to be at a place that by next year at this time, that we begin the process of saying, where are we at? What are the loose ends that we need to move on? And when in that, near the end of that third, third year, we come back and continue the progress on doing an update or update on the strategic plan, because that's critical to keep it fresh, and I can tell you by the amount of investment of time of the executive team and all of the supporting staff who are supporting us in getting that job done, we are making very positive progress, and we are now optimistic about being able to move a fair number of those items along in rather rapid fashion with the next steps along the way. So, we're looking forward to that sharing. We're excited about it, because it's, it's, it's a live, healthy document that will serve the community well. We've also asked Beth Lyman and Leadership for Oshkosh for Education to potentially be present at the meeting along with other representatives of the committee, because they are also certainly waiting with bated breath to see what progress are we making on this effort. So, it's, it's an exciting anniversary, a one-year anniversary of dealing with the strategic plan, and we're excited about moving that ahead.
I guess my only question with regard...
all that material to you. It's, and it's important anniversary for us because as we look at what has been accomplished, again, bearing in mind that we said at the beginning, a strategic plan is, is a up-to-three-year document. We want to be at a place that by next year at this time that we begin the process of saying, where are we at? What are the loose ends that we need to move on? And when in that, near the end of that third, third year, we come back and continue the progress on doing an update or update on the strategic plan because that's critical to keep it fresh. And I can tell you by the amount of investment of time of the executive team and all of the supporting staff who are supporting us in getting that job done, we are making very positive progress. And we are now optimistic about being able to move a fair number of those items along in rather rapid fashion with the next steps along the way. So we're looking forward to that sharing. We're excited about it because it's, it's, it's a live, healthy document that will serve the community well. We've also asked Beth Lyman and leadership for Oshkosh for Education to potentially be present at the meeting along with other representatives of committee because they are also certainly waiting with bated breath to see what progress are we making on this effort. So it's, it's an exciting anniversary of, one-year anniversary of dealing with the strategic plan and we're excited about moving that ahead.
I guess my only question with regard to future agenda items is probably geared towards Mike or Steve. When do we expect to see the compensation model coming before us?
I believe May 14.
May 14?
When you say the compensation model, it's the where we're at, the update.
Okay. And when do you expect a completed, when do you expect it to be coming before the Board with something?
That's a good question, man. I don't know if I even want to put a date out there. We're moving it along systematically and methodically as we can, so.
All right.
Is the intent to have this compensation model in place for this fall?
It was my intent.
Right.
That's the goal.
That's the goal. Okay. All right. Other announcements? Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Saginac?
Aye.
Saginac, aye. Widenhop?
Aye.
Widenhop, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliasen?
Aye.
Eliasen, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Versak?
Aye.
Versak, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Moshe Carey.
We stand adjourned at 6:30 or 6:50.
6:50.